I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to everyone who's come out for tonight. And I'd like to give the opening to Councilor Damian Penner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This last Wednesday was Bell Communications' annual Let's Talk campaign. Bell Let's Talk is a private initiative that they began in 2011 to bring awareness to the stigma surrounding mental health and the difficulties that everyday citizens struggle with silently. Bell donated five cents for every unit of service they delivered that day, be it a text message, phone call, long-distance call, or a public mention on social media. Since its inception, Bell has raised over $100 million towards mental health awareness. While this campaign has been extremely successful as a marketing strategy, it is important that we take the time to ensure we are continuing to make this single-day campaign a movement in our community. Mental health looks different to each and every person. Whether it be one of the five labeled illnesses, anxiety disorders, mood disorders, psychotic disorders, dementia, or eating disorders, we as leaders of our community have to ensure we are continuing the movement of bringing awareness to this issue. NAMI, the American National Alliance on Mental Illness, estimates that one in five adults will experience a form of mental illness in any given year. Put that number into perspective, in this room theoretically, multiple people in the last year have experienced negative mental impacts. Instead of looking around the room to find out who it is, we need to make sure we are rather saying, "How can we help?" We need to ensure that each day we are open to others and sympathetic to the issues others endure, whether outwardly visible or not. We truly never do know who around us is in dire need of an outreach and hand, quiet conversation, a firm hug, or positive words. Robin Williams' friends said of him, "He was always happy. Everyone adored him." Kate Spade's dad said after her passing, "I just talked to her an hour before," as she was planning a trip. She was just like her brand: happy, cheerful, and full of color. And most recently, somebody close to me, to my heart, Anthony Bourdain's best friend, Sid in Remembrance, he loved his life and had this extraordinary ability to just connect with people. This goes to show that even the most outwardly happy people can be putting on a facade every day to please those around them. Let me make this clear so everyone can hear: sometimes we need to check on those who see the strongest. We as leaders are expected to embody the best of what our community is. We are held to the highest of standards in the public eye, and that is something you cannot fake. We can't hold a facade on what our lives are behind closed doors and continue to hold up the warranted scrutiny of our citizens. It is up to us to give the caring hugs, to give kind words, and to admit our weaknesses and work on them. Bell Communications has personally reached over 2 million people with their initiatives and helped countless others in helping end the stigma surrounding mental health. Through Bell's initiative, they have also helped me in being able to take a stand and say that if you need to talk, you are not alone. As leaders of this community, we are charged in being the strongest examples of what we want to see in our community. So I will openly say that I too suffer from mental health issues, and it is okay. I am just as normal as the other councilors sitting around me. I do not make this statement to wear as a badge of honor, but rather to say, "Everyone suffers in one way or another, and it is okay to admit." I wanted to write this today as my first opening as a city councillor to say, "Let's talk." Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thanks for standing up.
Thank you, Councilor Damian Penner. Okay, councillor number three, adopt agenda. We have agendas in front of us. I'd like a motion to adopt, please. Councillor Bill Hebert, second by councillor Susan Penner. Any comments? Okay, nothing. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is approved. Okay. We have number four. We have the minutes of January 15th, 2019, regular council meeting in front of us. Councillors, you've all had a chance to review them. I'd like a motion to approve, please. Councillor Michael Swigstra, second by councillor Susan Penner. Any comments? Okay, I'll...
If I may just point out one item. Eight, councillor Siemens resolved that the City of Steinbach denied variance. Was that correct?
I believe I've moved that.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believed councillor Swigstra moved that. Councillor Siemens seconded that. Okay, the minutes will reflect that and the changes. Thank you. Okay, anything further? Okay, Kate, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? That's carried. Okay, number five, is there any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, it is just a little after 7:35, so we'll go directly to number six, the public hearing. Six A, variance V-2019-05, Ree 55 Hanover Road East. I will now close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is an application or a public hearing to consider the application for variance V-2019-05. The owner and the applicant for the variance is the City of Steinbach. First, the purpose of the variance is twofold. Firstly, to allow a site width of 120 feet, whereas a minimum site width of 600 feet is required in the DR1 Development Reserve One Zone. Secondly, to allow an overall lot area of .33 acres, whereas the minimum of 20 acres is required in the DR1 Development Reserve One Zone. The subject parcel is being subdivided from the larger parcel to allow for the development of a Centra gas, what they call a gate station. The conditional sales offer was considered by council a couple of months ago. This particular application for variance is in connection with that conditional sales offer. Public notices, as required under the Planning Act, have been issued. There is no correspondence on the file. I administration would recommend that city council approve the proposed variance.
Thank you, Mr. Workinteen. Is the applicant here today? The... Don't, don't...
We're the applicant.
Okay. Okay, so we're... Okay. Is there any questions of council to administration over this?
Just one question, Mr. Workinteen, Mr. Mayor. And that's the question. Should that be two variances or only one variance? One is for width and one is for area?
Yes, there's two particular issues that are under consideration. However, it is one variance application for this purpose.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Is there anyone here to object? Is there anyone here to object? I'll ask this one more time. Is there anyone here that would like to object? Okay. We will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Swigstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make the motion that we approve the variance.
Okay, motion to approve. Do I have a seconder? Second by councillor Bill Hebert. Okay, go ahead, councillor Swigstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it makes sense to approve the variance, and I have confidence that the applicant has good motives here. This is specifically here, we're talking about allowing a very small parcel from within the Development Reserve One Zone to be parceled off, to be subdivided, to allow for the Centra Gas utility station. The reason we have the policy in place as far as having a mandatory size is so that this area doesn't, this land doesn't become fragmented. In this particular case here, it makes sense to have the utility station there, and so hence we should go ahead with the application.
Anything further?
I would also add that we approve this, especially for future development. We'll need natural gas and so on, so definitely I'd say we approve this.
Okay. Anything further from council? Anything in closing, councillor Swigstra? Okay. Thank you, council. We'll ask for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, number seven, we have no delegation, so we'll move on to number eight. Reports and recommendations from city manager. And A, Aquatic Center. B, the public swim fee, that's on page 13 of your agenda package. Mr. Workinteen, would you please introduce this file?
Yes, this report is a copy of the report that was presented at the last Strategic Priorities Committee meeting to council. There was some significant discussion and debate over it. It is being forwarded at the recommendation of committee to council meeting for a decision. Overall, the recommendation, if you refer to page 14, there are two lines in blue. The first line, the higher one, is the suggested new fees before tax with four particular categories for adult, youth, child, and senior at the rates that are indicated. The increase does vary from no increase for the youth fee to a high of $4.76 before tax for the child fee, only because the category of three- to seven-year-olds is not currently being charged an entry fee. There was also some discussion at committee meeting of making either the youth fee higher or the senior fee lower to match each other, however, that wasn't conclusive. But at any rate, whatever council chooses to adopt as far as the public swim fees, the recommendation is further that the new fees become effective April the 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Workinteen. Council, are there any questions for administration on this file? Okay. Then council, seeing no questions, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Damian Penner?
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay, got a motion to approve. Seconder? Second by councillor Susan Penner. Okay, go ahead, councillor Damian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is something that I feel is very important to us as a city. Currently, the aquatic center is running a substantial deficit in excess of $800,000 per year. The directive from previous councils to administration was to run approximately a 66% cost recovery, which has not been achieved over the last two years. And with the projections we've received for this upcoming year, it looks looking closer to about a 58% cost recovery. This is a good move to take to bring us back closer to cost recovery of that 66%. Quick, immediate band-aid, as you may say, to bring that in. And also, I want to direct towards the new child fee. These are members that are in the pool. They are taking up capacity and are needing to be, we need to recover from that as well. So I feel like this is a good move by administration to present this to us, and I feel that this is going to only strengthen our aquatic center in the future of it.
Thank you. Councillor Penner, anything further?
Yes, it's important to note, I believe, that the last time fees were raised were in 2008, so that's 10 years ago, and it just makes sense that we would try and recover. Wages have gone up since then, costs, many other costs have gone up since then, so it only makes sense that we would at least, to some degree, try and recover those costs, the cost of operating. This is kind of a user-pay system, so it makes sense that the people who are using it pay more, but at the same time, every household, every taxpayer in Steinbach still is going to be paying a significant portion of that operating deficit. The other thing to note is this impacts people regardless of they're from Steinbach or from out of Steinbach. There's no separation in terms of where a person lives when it comes to this, and we're reviewing that for swimming lessons, but as for now, this is just a standard fee for whoever uses it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Anything in closing? Thank you, council. Yes, I agree with the comments that are, have been stated. Yes, this has been a long time in coming. We haven't had an increase for 10 years, and now this is a great recommendation by our city staff, and I think we should follow it, and we are following it to the letter. And it should help us generate approximately somewhere in the $80,000 range, which will definitely help the deficits that have been growing over the years due to exactly that: operating costs, wages are going up, plus we also are legislated how many lifeguards we need to have, and that's been increased too over the years. So it just, costs have been just coming up and rising in the aquatic center, and this is one way to help get our costs and our income in line. Okay. So with saying that, council, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. We'll go to 8B, that is the land sale of 115 and 119 Industrial Road, that is on page 16 of your package. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, there are a number of building lots that the City of Steinbach developed and subdivided approximately 2011, 2012. There's been an offer to purchase received on two lots at 115 and 119 Industrial Road by Mr. Andrew Heiderbrecht for the listed sale price of, or the combined listed sale price of $150,000 for each lot. The, there is an agreement that also is related to the sale, should council wish to approve it. Recommendation from administration is that council approve the sale of these two lots.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Workinteen. Council, how would you like to proceed on this? Councillor Swigstra?
I'll make the motion that we approve the sale.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a seconder? Second by councillor Jake Siemens. Go ahead, councillor Swigstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are two industrial lots that we are selling in this case. Total sale price for the two is $150,000. This is good to see. This is our industrial park. We've been actively seeking to sell these lots, and it's good to see our industrial park continuing to fill up.
Anything further, council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also note that the buyer is required to begin construction and substantially complete construction within a three-year time period. And if that doesn't happen, there is an opportunity for the city to buy the property back. So I think that's good because it'll promote construction on those sites.
Anything else from council? Anything further? Anything in closing? Okay, council, this is straightforward request to purchase land from us. These lots were built in 2012 to provide lots for businesses, for industries coming to Steinbach. And now we are selling them. I believe after this, we're going to have one left. So you know what? It's been successful. It's worked very, very well. So now, I guess, we'll go forward and ask for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, and we'll go to number nine, administration accounts payable in the back. I need a motion to approve. You've had a chance to review. Councillor Damian Penner? Motion to approve. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Susan Penner? Go ahead, any comments?
No comments.
Anything further? Okay, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, we'll go to B, bylaw 2117, road opening, Moreno Cove. That is on page 31 of your package. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this bylaw number 2117 is for the purposes of the road opening of Moreno Cove. It is a short section of road, as is shown on the sketch on page 34. This is part of a subdivision application 2018-7990 that city council dealt with around mid-2018. However, it has since been determined that this section of road needs to be open to allow services to be extended in connection with the development. Recommendation is for council to give this bylaw first and second reading.
Okay, council, what direction would you like to go? Councillor Jake Siemens?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. We need a seconder. Councillor Michael Swigstra. Okay, councillor Siemens, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As administration indicated, this is, we need to approve this opening so that services can be extended in that area.
Okay, councillor Swigstra? Anything further? Okay. Well, then, we will go directly into calling for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Mr. Workinteen, are we looking for second reading today, too?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I need a motion for second reading then. Councillor Damian Penner, second by councillor Bill Hebert. Any comments?
Pretty clear.
Nothing in closing? Okay. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Okay, that opposed, that is carried. We will go to 9C, bylaw 2015, Hanover Road East, road widening. This is the third reading. It is on page 35 of your agenda. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this bylaw number 2115 does deal with the road opening of a half-mile section of Hanover Road East. This bylaw is actually also in connection with the variance file that council dealt with earlier this evening and the proposed sale of that lot from the city to Centra Gas. Recommendation is city council approve third reading of this road widening bylaw.
Okay, council, this has come to us before. We just need a motion for third reading. Do I have a mover? Councillor Swigstra, second by councillor Penner. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, we've given first and second reading before. Same reasons then stand now, and this is obviously connected with the, with the land sale that is going ahead.
Anything further? Anything in closing? Okay, we'll just go call for the question. All those in favor, third reading. Opposed? That is carried. 9D, curbside collection, oh, I'm sorry, bylaw 202111, curbside collection, third reading, page 39 of your package. Mr. Workinteen, would you like to introduce this file, please?
Yes, this special service plan was considered by council in late 2018, and it was to renew the residential curbside waste collection special service plant. The bylaw and proposal were forwarded to the Manitoba Municipal Board after the public hearing and second reading. Municipal Board has now approved the city's proposal and bylaw, and as such, city council may give this plan and bylaw third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Workinteen. Okay, council, we're looking for a motion to approve third reading. Councillor Susan Penner, second by councillor Jake Siemens. Anything, any comments?
Well, this is just again in keeping line with increased operating costs. This isn't a new levy. We're just renewing a levy that already exists. It just allows us to increase costs at a reasonable rate to allow consistent service as operating costs.
Anything further? Anything in closing? Okay, council, I'll call for the question. All those approved, in favor of third reading. Okay, opposed? That is carried. We'll go to 9F, that is bylaw 2114, water supply treatment plant. Oh, sorry, I'm B. We go to 9E, sorry, bylaw 2113, Mackenzie Avenue Construction. That is the third reading. That's on page 88 of your agenda. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this?
Yes, this is a bylaw to authorize the debt issue for the 2018 construction project to rebuild a portion of Mackenzie Avenue. The bylaw has as well been approved by the municipal board and is for a borrowing of $300,000 to be arranged with the Toronto Dominion Bank over a five-year period with the repayment schedule as shown in the agenda package. Recommendation is for council to give this bylaw third reading.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Workinteen, council, we're looking for a mover for a third reading. Councillor Jake Hebert, second by councillor Susan Penner. Councillor Hebert?
As indicated by Mr. Workinteen, this is the third reading for this plan. In the past, there's been no objection, and the $300,000 seems to be reasonable for the continuation and for the completion of that project, so we're in agreement.
Thank you. Councillor Susan? Anything in closing? Nothing? Kate, I just want, council, I just want to add that this, this project was completed for less than what is anticipated. We were going to actually, we were approved for $500,000, but we only have to borrow $300,000, so that's good news, too. So we'll just call for the question now. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, we'll go to 9F now, bylaw 2114, water supply treatment plant. That is also the third reading. You'll find that on page 93 of your agenda. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, similar to bylaw 2113, bylaw 2114 is also a bylaw to authorize the venture issue for the supplementary water supply project. It was started in 2018, however, still is incomplete. However, with the scope of the project, the city has sufficient expenditures to be able to require and safely proceed with the debt issue for the maximum amount that was authorized for the project of 5.375 million. This borrowing will be arranged with the TD Bank at an annual interest rate of 3.29%. Recommendation is for city council to give this bylaw third reading.
Okay, council, we're looking for a motion for third reading. That councillor Michael Swigstra, second by councillor Susan Penner. Go ahead, councillor Swigstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It makes sense to proceed with third reading on this, and should be noted again that this is the large, this will be the largest project in the history of Steinbach so far, and this also happens to be our largest individual loan so far for the city. And I think it's, it's an important project, and it shows the priority that we as a city continue to place on basic infrastructure and making sure that we make the improvements and the upgrades now before the point at which they, we run into a problem. And so it makes sense for us to proceed, even though this is a really large debt that we're taking on.
Councillor Susan Penner?
Yeah, this is also us planning ahead for the future so development can continue to grow, which is obviously very important, so this project will allow that to happen. Because this is happening this year, it actually makes a tight year in terms of debt payment servicing, but that will be somewhat alleviated next year as other debt retires.
Anything further, council? Anything in closing? Okay, council, so here we are. Call for the question. All those in favor of third reading. Opposed? That is carried. Okay, council, on page 98, we have one of our favorite things to do, excavator licenses. So we're looking for a motion to approve. Excavator licenses. Councillor Damian Penner, second by councillor Jake Siemens. Go ahead.
Let them jig.
Anything further, mister, or councillor Siemens? Okay, thank you, council. Let's call for the question. All those in favor? Pardon?
Do I not have the closing?
Oh, anything in closing, sorry. I didn't think you'd have anything. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Business licenses. On page 99, there's a couple pages of them. Motion to approve. Councillor Jake Siemens, second by councillor Susan Penner. Any comments? Anything further, councillor Penner? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We go to 9I, Manitoba Hydro Street Lighting. That is Ree, Park Road West and Old Tom. The final on page 102. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this file?
This is a standard request for authorization from Manitoba Hydro based on the recent improvements to Old Tom Road and Park Road East, the paving in particular. The recommendation from administration is to install three streetlights to illuminate the corner of Old Tom and Park Road East, and the resolution from Manitoba Hydro is attached. Request council's resolution to approve.
Okay, council, looking for a motion to approve. Councillor Jake Hebert, second by councillor Bill Hebert. Councillor Hebert, would you like to?
As we all know, this intersection is becoming a very busy one, mostly traffic. It's not a lot of pedestrian, but obviously, it's sort of out in the country. It's the edge of town, and it's very important for lighting in that area, so I think it's a good move.
Anything further, councillor?
I would say the same. I've heard from residents that it's a very dark corner, so dangerous without lights, so I think it's awesome. We should approve.
Anything in closing, councillor Hebert?
No, thank you.
Yes, councillor, I think this is a great way, a good start to lighting up Yes, council, I think this is a great way, a good start to lighting up that road. It's very dark, and it's good to start in the corner, and I think it's, it's the first step in improving that entire area as far as lighting. So call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We've got nine J, the supplementary tax adjustments on page one oh four. I'd like a motion to approve, please. Councillor Damien Penner, second by councillor Michael Swagstra. Would you, any comments? Anything? Anything in closing? No? Okay. I'm never going to forget that again. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, number ten, council question period. Any questions of council today? Seeing none, go to eleven A, correspondence and petitions. That is on page one oh five. We have a letter from Katie Cares, Katie's Cottage, letter of request. Council, would you like to proceed? Take his information? Okay. We've got eleven B, the arm of St. Anne, Ree Municipal Support for Stars. That's on page one oh six. Council, would you like to proceed? Take his information? Okay. And we've got eleven C, J Cap Library Minutes. These are the minutes of December nineteenth, twenty eighteen, and January sixteenth, twenty nineteen. They're on page, starting on page one oh seven, and I believe one oh nine. Anything to add, councillor Damien?
Actually, I would. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to really reiterate and just make council aware that the library, especially Carol and the head librarian, is doing a fantastic job at stretching every single thing that they receive to make, to make their, the facility as great as it is, and they're very, very conscious and aware of that, and do a fantastic job with what they are allotted, so I just want to commend them on that.
Okay, thank you councillor Penner for, for your work on that board also. Thank you. Okay, so council, how would you like to move? Just take this as information? That's good. Okay, thank you. Number, number twelve, other business. And thirteen, we, the adjournment and our, I just need a motion for adjournment. Councillor Jake Siemens, second by councillor Damien Penner. Any comments? Closing? No? Call for the question. All those in favor? That is approved. Next regular council meeting is on Tuesday, February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, at seven thirty.